I call to order the September 8th, 2015 meeting of the Oshkosh-Cowen Council. Welcome to everyone joining us today here in the council chamber as well as those watching or listening through Oshkosh Community Media Services. We are happy to have all citizens participate in the government anyway, so welcome to all. At this time, I'd like the clerk to take the roll call.
Stepanik.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
Allison Osby.
Here.
Herman.
Here.
Peck.
Here.
Pansky.
Here.
Cummings.
Here.
Present seven.
And I'd like the invocation led by council member Stepanik and the pledge of allegiance by Amelia Reid from Oshkosh West High School. So we'll do the invocation first.
As we gather tonight, we are grateful for the good things that have come to this city. May our decisions always be ones that are for the well-being of all whom we govern.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a certificate of appreciation for you. So, thank you very much, and I can't help resisting asking, how do you like being back at school?
I'm loving it right now.
I didn't tell us.
I'm loving it right now. It's great to be back in all my activities and classes. I just really like school, so it's fun to be back.
Yes, sir.
A little bit.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we will have citizen statements to the council. Citizens are to address the council only. Statements are limited to five minutes, must address items that are not listed on the council meeting agenda, are limited to issues that have an impact on the city of Oshkosh and the Cowen Council, may address at a future meeting, and must not include endorsements of any candidates or any other electioneering. Are there any members of the public that would like to come forward? I see that once we move to consent agenda items, these are, consent agenda items are those items of a routine administrative nature that are voted on by the council in the single roll call vote. Staff recommends approval of the items. Any member of the public or Cowen Council requests an amendment removed from the council's consent agenda for discussion. One is approval of bills presented by the finance director. Two, receipt and filing of Cowen Council minutes from August 25, 2015. Approval of cash report from July 2015. Receipt of claims filed with the city's insurance company, a Wendy Guild for less damages to her vehicle from an uneven street grade, Brittany Fox for alleged injuries from falling at the zoo. Resolution 15-407, award bid for industrial forklifters for streets division to Fairchild Resolution 15-408, award bid for walk-in cooler and freezer for convention center, DeGatlin Mechanical Services, Inc., $52,260. Resolution 15-409, authorized police department grant for alcohol impaired driving enforcement. Resolution 15-410, approve accepting grant from Wisconsin Historical Society to prepare nomination application for the Washington Avenue Neo-Classical Historic District and the State National Register of Historic Places. This is a $5,000 grant. Resolution 15-411, approve accepting community development investment grant funds from Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation to undertake central city investment strategy study, $50,000. Resolution 15-412, approve engineering services agreement with AECom Technical Services for design services for South Park area basin retrofit, $299,900. Approve amended amendment to engineering services agreement with AECom Technical Services, Inc. for design of stormwater detention basins in the Camel Creek watershed, $6,000. Resolution 15-414, approve change order number one for public works contract number 15-07 with PTS Contractors, Inc. for utility repairs and installation at various locations, $51,637.81. Resolution 15-415, disallowance of claim by Greg Roberts. Resolution 15-416, disallowance of claim by Karen Gurkey. Resolution 15-417, approval of block party Grabner Street between Murdock Avenue and Cliffview Drive, September 19, 2015. Resolution 15-418, approve appointment for the following long-range finance committee. And resolution 15-419, approve combination Class B license, special Class B licenses, apparel licenses, and taxi cab driver licenses. That is the end of our consent agenda items. Are there any items that the public would like, that has questions, or the council would like to question?
I just have a couple of questions. Resolution 15-411, Mr. Davis can probably answer this. Now, we have the information that, you know, it's a $50,000 grant, but obviously, the undertaking of central city investment strategy study is a lot more expensive. Could you just kind of let us know who all the partners are that are helping funding this project besides this grant?
Yes, this is a $200,000 project, so WEDC has given us $50,000 towards that total 200. We actually combined two projects into that project. One is the parking study that we started earlier this year, but we combined that with the central city investment strategy to get a little more grant money out of WEDC to leverage those dollars and get more state dollars. And then there's the central city investment strategy, so parking study and central city investment strategy. And the parking study is, was partially funded by the bid, and the city's TIF districts in the downtown looking at parking alternatives. That was the part that started a few months ago. And then the city was awarded the grant for the WEDC funds. We went through an RFP process to hire a consultant for the central city investment strategy. I believe the council hired that consultant last meeting or the meeting before for about $150,000. And that's a consortium of several people, the Community Foundation, the Chamber of Commerce, WEDC, the city's TIF districts. I hate to leave anybody out, so I'm going to refer back to my notes here. Let's see, yes, Community Foundation, Chamber of Commerce, and the bid all contributed to pieces of the project. So, we're still anticipating getting the parking study done here still this year in 2015 and finishing the central city investment strategy in 2016 as early as we can.
Thank you. And the reason I brought the question up is, I just want citizens to realize that we are partnering with other organizations and people that benefit from these studies, and that it's just not the citizens of Oshkosh and the councils, you know, spending that money. There are other partners into these programs and a lot of these projects, so I think that's something they need to get out there that, you know, besides the grant, the Community Foundation and the Chamber, as you mentioned, the bid, are all participating in these projects which will benefit all of Oshkosh when we get the studies done and be able to move forward and planning with them. And we hope that these partners will continue to support it in the future as we move forward with these projects. So, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I have one comment and then also a question. First is resolution 15-410. Andy, do you have the slide up there to show what is this district that will be getting the grant? It is what we're calling the Neo-Classical District in downtown. It includes buildings, the Public Library, the former Masonic Temple, what was once the Oshkosh Post Office, a building that was originally built as Wisconsin National Life Insurance Company, a building on the corner of State and Washington, which was built by the Fraternal Order of Something or Other back 101 years ago. It's now called the Washington Building, and then also a small printing company to the east of the Washington Building. And I think David Buck in the planning department, he did all the work to get this grant put together. What it means to people, the current owner of these buildings and developers, there are tax credits available for them once this is declared the historic district. Without the tax credits, I think rehabbing and maintaining these buildings will become very cost prohibitive and will lose some of the important historic elements of downtown. So, thank you, David, and so forth. And then my question would be, is resolution 15-4112, the approval of the engineering services agreement with AECom Technical Services for the design services for South Park area detention base, Mr. Godey?
Certainly. Andy, if you could pull the slide up, please. This project is for, excuse me, this project is for designing the South Park lagoons, basins, and retrofitting them to better accommodate stormwater management, to allow for improvements in the park and the aesthetics of it, to review the structures in there, including the historic bridge, do a structural analysis and determine if any work needs to be done, redo the spillways to improve those and the appearance of those as they come through the park. Where it is being done with AECom, who has combined services with Retler, who has done the master planning for South Park along with Benominy Park and the outdoor recreation plan, to bring together a team to really, fully bring together the master plan as well as make sure it goes along with the goals of the park to make it more aesthetically pleasing, restore the shoreline so people don't have to climb over the bench to sit on them next to the lagoon any longer, and really get the park cleaned up.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
I just wanted to add to that, that part of the funding, and this is with your stormwater utility fee. So, this is something that every month, or every quarter, when you get your utility bill and there's a stormwater fee on there, this is part of the continuing development that that fee helps provide. There's obviously another, the Park Improvement Fund is another source of funding for this, but it is a commitment that the city has taken on through the stormwater utility to continue to look at our infrastructure and make sure that we're meeting the needs of our citizens. And so, if you have questions about what that fee is, this is an example of what that fee is being used for, to find creative solutions to our flooding issues using our existing assets and working with other partners to leverage other sources of funding as well.
Okay, thank you. If there's no further, if there's no public comment, I'll bring you back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I had asked previously, I talked to you this afternoon, about resolution 15-418 regarding our boards and committees, if you wanted to just speak a little on that about the process to apply and what you do to approve them and so forth.
You can help me make the appeal that we have numerous boards and commissioners in this city. We're always looking for new members of these boards, commissioners, people retire, people move. I think you'd have great fun serving on a board or commission. Most meet once a month. It's your chance as a citizen of Oshkosh to help shape the future of the Oshkosh because the boards and commissions do make recommendations to the city council. So, the process is, just check with Diane, Mr. Rooff, the administrative assistant on the fourth floor, for an application. Fill it out, and when an opening comes up, then you'll be considered for that.
And that information is now listed on the bottom of your screen. That has the phone number for Diane, and then it also has the city's website, and there's plenty of information out on that website. So, use that information that's down on the bottom of the screen here, and we can help you out getting on a board and commission. And it's a lot of fun, and it's how I got started in municipal government, so.
Thank you. Would you like to add anything, Ms. Pansky?
Nope. Last I checked, there were openings yet for the Grand Opera House, the Committee on Aging, and the Landmarks Commission as well. So, if you're interested, we're trying to keep the website as updated as possible, but use the information there and get more current information.
So, thank you again for the reminder.
Sure. Thank you.
And I wish I could take the roll call.
Stepanik.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Peck.
Aye.
Pansky.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Kariette Seven.
Now, there were no items removed from the consent agenda, so we'll go to council discussion, direction of the city manager, and future agenda items.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our next budget workshop is scheduled for a week from tomorrow, September 16th at 5:00 PM. It'll be held here in 404. The primary purpose of that meeting is to discuss the capital improvement program in general, not specifically. You will be receiving, if you haven't already received a copy, a copy of the 2016 through 2020 CIP. It's not the purpose of that meeting to discuss that, that just happens to be a happy coincidence. We're really going to be discussing the borrowing directives that council has given and some of the issues that are related to that, as well as discussing possible wheel tax. Remember the overwhelming or underwhelming response we got when we did the citizen survey this year, as well as the discussion that occurred last year when the city of Appleton proposed it. We're going to be prepared to discuss that as well. So, those are the topics in general. We're not going to get into the details of the CIP, but you will have it for your reading pleasure for the, over the next week.
Just a reminder that I will be out of town for that meeting. Depending on internet access, I may watch you guys discuss this online, but I don't know what the status of internet will be on that meeting, so.
It will be on OCMS, and you can stream away.
I don't know what the internet access is going to be in Tennessee where I'm going to be, so.
Oh, they have it down there, sort of. Oh.
I don't know the specifics of the establishment where I am staying.
Okay, just moving on. Moving on. Moving on. And next is pedicab regulations, and Ms. Pansky, this was your item.
Thank you. Last week, I received an email from somebody stating that he was interested in starting a small business here regarding pedal cabs or bike taxis, specifically the Main Street area. He highlighted on Waterfest, EAA, Farm Market, and I just thought it was kind of a neat little fit right now that if, you know, we could get something going where we have a parking issue downtown, where you could kind of alleviate some of that parking elsewhere and rely on this pedal cab. He was interested in looking at the ordinances, found out we don't really have anything in place. Said that Milwaukee and Madison have ordinances in place, so I don't know if this is something we wanted to approach. I know we had the conversation with the Pedal Pubs, which was the bar on wheels, so to speak. This would not involve alcohol, would just be transportation in general, and I just wanted to have the conversation with you guys to see if there was an interest or a need.
Ms. Lawrence, then you're waiting here.
We actually have had pedal cabs in the past. We've regulated them under the taxi cab ordinance because that, the way it's written, it's any vehicle that takes passengers for hire. So, they would actually make an application through the clerk's office. There's some small fee for it, it's like $10 or something. And they have to take their bicycles over, the police department does inspection on them, and so that's how we've done them in the past. We certainly can take a look at the ordinance, there's probably some things that should be updated in that ordinance anyway, but we've been watching, particularly with consideration to some of the other issues that are going on with Uber and other kinds of things, so I'm not sure if we want to, we haven't had a chance to talk about that yet either, if we want to take on that update or wait until that starts to kind of fall through.
And that's where I wanted to start the conversation with council and just see what the thoughts were on this idea.
Technically, that person could apply today.
Yep.
Because we don't distinguish between the motorization or lack thereof with whatever cabs we do have. The bigger issue probably would be doing with Uber and things like that. But with that said, somebody wants to apply, they could do it tomorrow morning.
Well, based on what the city attorney just said, I think the best would be to just do a review of our policy, our ordinance, and then incorporate any of the new changes, as you mentioned, Uber, there's a couple other, I think, different organizations.
There's some legislation related to that, so we've been kind of watching that to see where it goes.
And then bring that back to council for any changes in the ordinance, but I don't think we need a separate one on that, as long as it's already covered under our taxi cab ordinance.
As long as there's a functioning ordinance, I think, when we do the full review to address some of the other issues, it might be the time to incorporate that. But if we've already got a process by not distinguishing what a motorized one is, I think you can respond to your citizen.
Well, I think we can definitely review the ordinance, but I didn't want to take that step if there wasn't any support behind it here. Do you know what I mean?
Oh, absolutely. If there's already, if they're already watching it, I think we may have changes that are made for us, similar to some of the things that we're dealing with, the housing authority stuff right now, where the rules have changed elsewhere and we have to update our stuff to be in accordance with it.
So, we'll work on that and come back to council.
And good luck with Uber. There are two registered Uber drivers in Appleton now.
Yep.
They're moving closer.
Is that?
Yep. I just wanted to start that conversation, so, thank you.
The next item on the agenda is something I asked to have put on after the council meeting last week, and we're calling it legislation needed to improve property tax fairness. And for those of you who watched the council meeting two weeks ago, a number of us expressed concern over a trend that seems to be growing, and I shouldn't say seems, over a trend that's growing in this country through the large retailers, more commonly known as box stores. They have convinced the courts to have their properties assessed differently than normal. The terms they're using are black stores or box stores or ghost stores, indicating that the store has only value to them. Our concern as a council, as we see this trend, what impact it may have on homeowners as these large retailers have their taxes reduced, those dollars have to be shifted to the homeowner. So, we had a meeting last week, Mark Rooff and I, Alan Davis and the city assessor, so they, he explained what is going on and how this trend will affect the homeowner or the taxpayer. So, I'm going to ask Mr. Rooff to explain it in much better detail than I just did, but that is why we all showed a bit of concern two weeks ago over what was happening with Walgreens and then Time Warner. So, Mr. Rooff, you would please explain.
Sure, I'd be happy to. There are really two things going on under that umbrella of tax fairness, and really, this really is an issue of tax fairness because you have issues with assessment of properties, and they commonly are referred to as big boxes, and they're really, the fairness issue there, as the mayor said, with residents, because when the levy stays the same and the pie has been redistributed in terms of the distribution of the tax bill to property owners in the city, these reductions are hitting residential property owners, but they're also hitting small businesses. There have been articles that I've shared with the council, it potentially impacts downtown businesses, that's true, but it's really any business that doesn't have that big box or that large presence along a major corridor. And the land value certainly isn't being impacted, because the land value is one thing, but the improvements, they're changing the way in which the improvements are being valued, and the method that they're using completely ignores the income approach, and it completely ignores what is very common in real estate, which is highest and best use. What's the highest and best use of that property? And the highest and best use at those large, busy intersections are properties that generate a lot of income. So, by the fact that they're ignoring the income approach just says they're ignoring the highest and best use. That's a very simplistic way. I'm not an attorney, I'm not an assessor, I'm just trying to explain it to you as best I can from, in layman's terms. And I think that's how most people see that as a fairness issue. So, it is not just an issue of residents, it's also an issue of small businesses. With respect to Walgreens, the mayor asked me to give you some information, because the council has had to approve some of these settlements in a very piecemeal fashion over the last few years. And over the last few years, and this is just with Walgreens in the city, we've refunded them the equivalent of over $300,000. Now, that is not just the city, that's all the taxing jurisdictions. We're at about $115,000 of that amount. So, we're about roughly a third of that, but it's the schools and the county and the Volk Tech district that also get impacted by that. And other entities are taking a look at what's happening in Wisconsin and saying, well, if it worked for Walgreens, it'll work for us. And we're starting to see people line up. And the board of review, because of these court cases, they're essentially compelled to lower these assessments, even though the directions that are given to the assessor tells them to assess the way in which we've been assessing, the court is saying, well, you have to ignore the assessor manual, in effect. And the assessor manual is the bible for the assessors to follow to value properties. And when you ignore highest and best use and you ignore the income approach, you're really ignoring the basic fundamental premise of fairness, because you have businesses, if it's a home improvement store, and I won't use names, because I'm not going to be doing commercial messages tonight, but if you have a home improvement store and a hardware store, the home improvement store is saying you need to value us differently than you value the hardware store. You know what's going to happen. It's going to disproportionately go to the mom and pop stores, disproportionately go to residences. There certainly needs to be an open discussion about this legislatively, because this is a major public policy decision that's getting dictated by the courts rather than through the legislature. I know the League of Municipalities is very interested in changing that, and I think we need to be leaders on that. We're the eighth largest city in the state, they need to hear from us, because I would submit to council that we're kind of the canary in the coal mine. We're on the front end of this, and other communities are not yet feeling the impact because we were the, probably the second largest case in the state. The Madison case was first, we're second, and the state's refusing to hear our case because they think that the Supreme Court is pretty much taking care of this. This needs to be resolved legislatively. That's only half, I'm sorry, I only gave you half of that. The second half, it has to do with personal property taxes. You know that there have been discussions at the state level about eliminating the personal property tax. I'm just giving you my own personal opinion, and it's a buildup of years of watching the personal property tax base get withered away. I'm in agreement, I think we should eliminate the personal property tax, but it should only be done if we have something to make up for the loss that we will experience. We in Oshkosh will lose about 4% of our property value if personal property tax was eliminated. So, some people might say, well, why are you proposing that if it's going to hurt you in terms of balancing the budget mark? That seems counterintuitive. But the reality is, is the state is slowly withering away at the personal property tax, and the one that was most recently done with Time Warner costs Oshkosh taxpayers about $100,000 a year. Now, what that means is, that $100,000 is going to get redistributed to residential property owners and others because their value has been lowered so much. So, there's another $100,000 that the taxpayers are losing. And think about that at the state level. If it's, if Oshkosh is only, if we, it's $100,000 just in Oshkosh, imagine what it is throughout the entire state. There's cable companies all over the place, that's personal property. Why should the cable companies get that benefit and not somebody else who's paying personal property tax? Every small business person fills out on their honor, fills out a form that says, here's what I have in personal property, and they do it in good faith and pay that bill. The legislation, and I would say even administratively, these are getting withered away that some businesses are winners and a lot of businesses are losers. We need to level the playing field. So, I'm a little bit on the soapbox, and normally, the soapbox is reserved for you as the elected officials, but the impact on us is so significant, and I think the impression is that this is an anti-business move. anti-business move. It's a fair business move, because there are small businesses who are being disproportionately impacted as a result of this, and I think we need to have this discussion at the state level, and I appreciate the council bringing up the issue and bringing it to the forefront, because it's, we have to have this honest public policy debate, even if it turns out against, it turns out against us. We've got to have this debate so that we give some direction to the legislature to do something that's right. So there, that's, there's my speech, Mr. Mayor.
And just one quick comment, so people understand, personal property taxes are not real estate taxes. It's the typewriter in a business. It's the furniture, it's those type of things. So there is, that's the major difference. There's real estate, and then there's personal property. Mr. Peck has a comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much, Mark. Based on the comments that were made last week, there was a lot of heat and light that was generated related to the comments. In no way were the comments anti-business, anti-big-box. We welcome those types of businesses to come into our community. As Mr. Roloff pointed out, the issue is an issue of fairness. As he indicated, all other properties are assessed on the highest and best use. These businesses have come in, as Mr. Roloff pointed out, and have changed the rules in how they are assessed. They are not using what everyone else uses. That was the point that was being made. In no way, shape, or form is this council against development. We welcome those types of operations to come into our community. It is a matter of fairness, and a matter of paying your fair share of the uses of city services that you do. So I want that made, I want that point made. One more time, this is not anti-business. We want these stores to come in, but it is an issue of fairness.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Roloff. I think this is a prime candidate for an issue that we continue our discussions with our legislative representatives. We had that very productive meeting at the museum a few months back, and I think this is another candidate of an issue that we should be talking to them about, to make them aware of how this affects us at a local level, and that is our responsibility as elected officials to represent the needs and of our citizens, and interests of our citizens. As part of that, I would also look to our fellow cities through the League of Wisconsin Municipalities and other organizations, so that we can build a coalition. Because if we're crying in the night and don't have anyone else ringing the bell, it may fall on deaf ears. But if we start to have communities speaking up on a regular basis, and we have other communities, and we're all saying the same thing, and our citizens are making a demand on the state government, that's how change happens. And so it's all about fairness. And as an employee of a small business, I understand how that personal property tax affects our bottom line. Whether we can grow or not, it makes a difference. And when we move forward with the discussion, I think it's a great opportunity for us to build partnerships with other communities and our representatives.
Good point. Mr. Herman?
Thank you, Mayor. To Deputy Mayor Peck's comments, I totally agree, it is a fairness issue. I do think we, but we have to be delicate. I think we all heard the Chamber of Commerce comments last Friday or Monday, I think it was, on the radio, and it did come out that this council is anti-business, and that's the wrong message. So I do think that we need to reach out to GoEDC, reach out to the Chamber of Commerce, reach out to our legislators, and really reach out and explain the problem, the fairness problem, and how it is affecting our small businesses, our citizens in Oshkosh, and the whole issue, so that they understand it, because soundbites and media stories don't always get the total picture and how it's affected. And so I do think that we need to not only reach out to our legislators, but also to those that we are partnered with. Tonight, we brought up, you know, the Business Improvement District is helping fund the study, the chamber's helping to fund the study, so we need to reach out to those organizations too, I think, and it's an all-inclusive. And maybe it's a workshop, maybe it's a letter of understanding, but something that we can put out there to those organizations to let them know that, as Mr. Peck said, you know, we're not anti-business, but we want the playing field level, so that we can continue to offer the services that we provide to not only our citizens, but to our businesses. And, you know, weekly, we're getting updates from the League of Municipalities of pending legislations and things, and there's a couple in there, again, of concerns that I have about regulations and things that are out there, and we need to stay on top of those things. And I would encourage Ms. Roloff to try to, even though we've got a lot on our plate with the budget coming up, to try to get another meeting, yet this fall or early winter with our legislators again, and express the concerns, because I don't, I know it's going to take some time for, to take the legislative role, and they will have to trumpet that and help us out on that. It's not something we can legislate on a local policy level at all, so it has to come from the state. So I just wanted to bring that up, too.
Thank you. Simon, Mr. Pansky?
Well, I'm glad the council took it upon themselves, as well as involved Mark, to explain our stance, but, you know, in some respects, I don't, it's pretty well-known that we support business, and we support economic development, just based on what we've done and our support with GoEDC, as well as a number of other things, like aviation park and things like that. And I just think that, you know, there's going to be times that, you know, we're going to say things, and, you know, it's other people's jobs to stir the pot, or to pick a fight, or whatever the case may be. So I'm not going to give too much, you know, relevance to the comments that we've made, because essentially, we certainly have supported business and all kinds of business.
Anything else? One thing I would like to encourage all the council members who will be at the league conference in October, to make this kind of a goal, is to talk to as many people from as many communities about this issue, because we'll be stronger if we're united on this. So if there's nothing else, it is now time for the second Go at Citizen Statements to council.
I, well, you, I don't know if this should really be under council discussion or under citizen statements. I did receive an email from Mr. Cornell, who at this time, Mr. Cornell, 548 Wisconsin Street, would have probably been coming forward to the microphone. Unfortunately, he is at his condominium associations meeting. It's amazing how many things he's involved in in this community. But at this time, like I said, it would have been Bob Cornell, 548 Wisconsin Street. The family fall, Fall Family Fun Fest.
Fun Fest.
Say that three times. Fall Family Fun Fest at the Oshkosh Senior Centers will be this coming Sunday. It is from 11 o'clock until 3:00 p.m. There will be games, all sorts of other things to do at the senior center. Additionally, the, prior to that, is the Granny Smith Run Walk. There is a 5K, there is a two-mile, and there is a two-mile walk and a one-mile walk. Registration for those starts at 9:15, and the run, the 5K starts at 10:00 a.m., and then the two walks start at 10:15. So I put the plug in for that. We hope to see many of the citizens of Oshkosh come on out. Have a great Sunday afternoon, something family-oriented, and get to know the Oshkosh Senior Center.
Family-friendly Fall Family Fun Fest.
You can go to Tennessee anytime you want.
Y'all.
Yeah.
How can we do citizen statements to council? You're through?
I'm done.
Okay. Citizens are to address, the council only. Statements are limited to five minutes. Must address items that are not listed on the council meeting agenda, are limited to issues that have an impact on the city of Oshkosh, and the common council may address at a future meeting, and must not include endorsements of any candidate or other electioneering. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to step forward? I see no one, so city manager announcements and statements. Mr. Roloff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is a memo in your packet regarding the hiring of Brown and Caldwell. They're one of consulting engineers that assists us with stormwater. They're going to be performing a variety of modeling, hydraulic modeling of our stormwater systems, because our five-year CIP includes a multitude of projects in the Stevens Park area, along Bowen Street, I believe the area is Bowen Street, Waguon in the north, the lake on the south and east. That whole area is going to see a lot of street improvements over the next five years, and we really feel it's appropriate to do a full-scale modeling of this rather than a piecemeal fashion. Mr. Godey's engaged Brown and Caldwell to begin that work, and I've approved it, and it's in the stormwater utility operating budget, so we're just planning for the next five years of street projects by doing this hydraulic modeling. Happy to answer any questions you may have on that.
If there are none, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Adjourn.[1740.53]